All right. Good morning, welcome to the Monday, June 24th special meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. I'll call this meeting to order. If you could please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Eric, will you lead us this morning?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we've got, next on the agenda is an Arrow Fire update. Eric?
Good morning, Board. Thank you for having me today. Thank you for calling this special meeting. I would like to first start off by inviting Chief Nick Cassi up from CAL FIRE TCU unit to give a operational briefing from the fireside. How about now?
It works.
Awesome. Thank you. Well, good morning Chairman Garamendi, members of the Board, CEO Hitchcock, and county staff. My name is Nick Cassi. I'm the unit chief for CAL FIRE Twomey Calaveras Unit and the CAL FIRE Agency Administrator for the Arrow Incident. I'd like to give you a quick history of the incident and then an update of where we're at today to segue into Mr. Holt's presentation regarding the declaration. So with that, I have a map up here and a cursor. I'll do my best. I don't know if you can see the cursor well enough. I'll try to use that as a guiding tool for the explanation of the incident. So, the incident started on the 17th of June at 3:30 in the afternoon or 3:29 to be exact. There was a red flag warning in effect, however technically, if you would ask the weather service, it didn't necessarily reach the fire area, but I can assure you that it did regardless of that line. The conditions we saw were a red flag condition. With the fire start and the heavy north wind push, we experienced a fire growth with the initial reported being about 30 to 40 acres with spotting a quarter mile. In the next 10 minutes, we had a report of a spot a half mile and then the air attack reported a spot a three quarters of a mile ahead of itself. So this fire started back here where the cursor is with the wind in alignment to start pushing it across this ridge top. Now for orientation to the map, this red line down the middle of the fire scar here is Highway 4. We have Rock Creek Road takes you back through here and then down at the bottom end of this line here is Pile Road, back into the old Pile Ranch and Black Creek. I'll make those references as we talk about control objectives. So with that rapid expansion, our intel aircraft was over the scene to advise 1,500 acres within the first hour of the fire, which is a rapid expansion, one in which we haven't had in that area, that footprint since 1994. So the command staff that was at scene acknowledged that direct tactics weren't going to be effective due to the long-range spotting along with the rapid fire growth and they established command in order to expand the incident for indirect tactics as well as a heavy resource order. For fire resources, for reference, we have what CAL FIRE refers to as incident management teams, which come in to assist in managing large incidents when they exceed the unit's capabilities. Logistically, tends to be the biggest driver in that and we can usually support about 500 people. At the peak of this incident, we were about 1,025 line personnel assigned. So as the fire expanded, I went and responded to the incident to assist the command staff to ensure that we were supported from the region with resources. And when we made our way onto Hunt Road from Highway 4, we could tell immediately that Highway 4 was not going to be a control point in which we'd be able to enforce due to the spotting. Typically, we tried to take advantage of natural barriers or human-made barriers that we're able to establish lines at and we instantly recalibrated our priorities to find control lines further out, provide evacuation recommendations to the sheriff for implementation, and then also ensured that our local ranchers were able to have access and move in cattle out of the fire's path as it was expanding. So where it came together for the incident, we acknowledged that the community of Copper, what I would call Old Town Copper along O'Burn's Ferry, was going to be threatened immediately. And if you've followed some of the media, you've seen some of those fire pictures behind Copper Elementary School as it rapidly progressed to the south and to the east. We had a large support of resources, both aerial assets and ground resources that came in and with the scale of the unit personnel, our local government cooperators, and some outside units that were there in the first few hours, we started a firing operation from the old ranch on Pile Road to come down and start firing out ahead of the fire on Pile Road, which actually was a control line that was used in 1994 with success. During that, we had another firing operation that grabbed into the riprarian area of Black Creek and started progressing to the north and the west with the goal of tying this in with fire back into Highway 4. And the firing operation from Pile Road and O'Burn's Ferry then progressed all the way back up and we were able to put fire in and around the Old Town Copper area as the main fire was still progressing this way. So if you think about that Christian Gulch area, which is a predominant Gulch and ridge line to the east of the map, the fire as it runs across the top will then start backing down the sides of that mountain, kind of low intensity, and once it becomes in alignment again, it'll make hard runs. So by doing a firing operation, we're able to control it and do it on our terms versus having to deal with that head fire that then typically goes over those barriers. Unfortunately for us at the incident, as these two operations were occurring, the fire came across Rock Creek Road in that very example that I just mentioned and made a hard run through several of the ranch properties and was headed towards what we called the Hotsen Road area of Copper down here. We were lucky enough and with some skill to put some dozers and have another firing team tie into Highway 4, start pushing dozers and line back this way towards the north and we were able to fire that and tie it in. And very proud of all the personnel, both local government and state and our tribal cooperators, that were able to keep this fire at 5,351 acres in the first burning period. That fire did not exceed that footprint for the remainder of the incident. We had the Type 1 Incident Management Team come in and was able to assist logistically with plans and then additional staff to come up with a multi-day plan for rotations and we were able to keep the fire and the footprint it exceeded in about the first five hours. So very proud of the staff for that. One thing of note, as it may tie into Mr. Holt's presentation, was the main transmission lines that provide power into Angels Camp. They were immediately threatened by a fire in a manner in which we couldn't mitigate the early part of the incident. Those run just downright off of Highway 4 and up over through the Christian Gulch area and so the community of Angels Camp was impacted immediately because those lines were damaged. So, very, very supportive of our local law enforcement, being the sheriff's office, the support we received from them for evacuations at the ICP. It was very seamless, the notification piece from OES. No incident that expands that rapidly is going to be smooth in the first few hours, but I would say I was really proud of all agencies making it as seamless as possible for what we were dealt. We did lose three structures. Those structures that were lost were on this Hotsen Road area. I believe it's one residence and two outbuildings and there was what we'll call some commercial structure damage down here near the old Highway 4 and Rock Creek intersection. So, without any other, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer and if not, then I'll turn it back over to Mr. Holt. Okay, thank you.
I'm just going to go ahead and segue right into inviting Under Sheriff Whiting up to give you an update on statistics and the evacuation efforts I wanted to protect in our community.
Good morning, thank you everyone. As Chief Cassi noted, within the first couple of minutes, the first 911 calls that came in, we start sending resources and our goal from the sheriff's office at the start of any wildland fire is to tie in with whoever the fire department incident commander is and start coordinating efforts immediately. So that began taking place within the first hour of this fire and how rapidly it was moving and with really good communication with CAL FIRE notifying us based on their weather and wind outlook, knowledge of the fuel loads, previous burns, topography, everything, knowledge of fire behavior, they were able to notify us very early that this was going to go and this wasn't going to be stopped with an immediate initial attack. So, we activated provisions of our emergency plan, recalled personnel within the first hour, started creating emergency and contingency staffing plans. We sent all available deputies, detectives, and the other personnel that weren't initially on patrol. We had great support from the Calaveras probation department that assisted with our initial notifications, evacuation warnings, and orders. Great communication with CAL FIRE, giving us a timeline based on the rate of spread for knowledge of when it was going to jump Highway 4. It was essential for getting personnel west of the fire and coordinating ingress routes to get down to Copperopolis and our guys knowing about at what point Highway 4 was unsafe to pass. So, by 1,800 hours, we had already coordinated with the Office of Emergency Services with the State of California Law Enforcement mutually. We ordered up an additional 10 two-man units, so 20 officers from outside of the area that came in for the nighttime shift to assist with both evacuations and then knowing that we had evacuated the entire community down there, that we needed to immediately increase patrols for the safety and security of the homes and businesses. So we ramped up for that. So we put our personnel on 12-hour shifts, created at least a three-to-five day scheduling plan and as soon as our field command linked up with the CAL FIRE incident commander up to and after the transition of when the incident command team came in, we linked in with them. The communications from the field to the EOC, to our administrative staff in the EOC were seamless. As soon as the field would relay to dispatch where warnings and orders needed to be in place, we utilized the Genesis system, which worked very well. It's very fast when notifying the community, so we continue to encourage anyone in Calaveras County to make sure you get access to that and know what zone you're located in. It's a very seamless system and it makes communication go even faster than we can push out information by crafting press releases. So, the Genesis system was a good investment and we utilized it well. After the EOC was stood up, we continued coordination. Some kudos and some thank yous. Public Works, our county Public Works did awesome, getting some digital signs that the highway was closed, assisting us with barricades on our road closure and traffic control points. HHS has really done well creating their shelter plan and standing up the shelters and understanding our small community. We don't have a lot of ingress egress routes in emergencies, so when we shut down a major artery like Highway 4, we have to put up shelters in several different areas, not just one shelter, especially when you are evacuating several thousand people and not knowing, some refuse to evacuate and they stay, some will go with family and friends, some will go without of the area, but to be able to have somewhere where both people and pets can go, that was stood up very fast in two different directions on either side of the incident. And then our coordination with Animal Services on starting to figure out our emergency ranch access pass, we did our best at the onset of the fire, just to make sure, there's a lot of ranch land that's covered in this fire, so we did our best to accommodate for livestock evacuations and Animal Services did great throughout the whole fire to articulate if we needed to escort people in and get them out to meet those needs and then coordinating with our utility partners, knowing that this affected a lot more communities than just Copperopolis and the power being shut down to Angels Camp. Those transmission lines served some very critical infrastructure for the county. You have the Fowler Peak Communication Towers that went out of power, which means they were all running on generator or battery. So PG&E did a great job to prioritize that critical infrastructure as well as the City of Angels to re-energize the lines as soon as they can and the Water District to letting us know the draw on the holding tanks down there and when to divert it from, you know, all the different fire resources to what it's going to look like for the residents repopulating. So, start to finish, it was very rapid, but the coordination went very well on our end. Any questions from the Board? Thanks.
Am I on again? Do you guys hear me? Let me share our PowerPoint. While as scary as last Monday was for the county, we have good news to report today and I'll get into that, but I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the fact that just over 30 days ago, I was introduced to you guys as the new Director of Emergency Services and I learned a lot this week within the capabilities of this county that I am impressed with. Two, I'll start with and I'll end with more. The leadership from the Under Sheriff with the Sheriff's Office is astounding. That coordination was very impressive to watch and the second fact being, I firmly believe that we here in Calaveras County have the best unit chief within CAL FIRE and his work and his crews were absolutely amazing and I feel completely blessed to have them as a resource. So without further ado, I will get into the good news. This is this morning's update from CAL FIRE TCU. Of note, as Mr. Cassi had explained, or Chief Cassi, my apologies, the footprint at 5,351 acres is the same since day two. That is an impressive and triumphant feat. We now stand at 90% containment as of 0700 this morning, so we are almost fully wrapped. Probably the most important stats, if you'll look right here, civilian injuries, we had zero and fatalities, zero. That's a victory with any operation. Unfortunately, we did have three structures destroyed. Two were residences, one was an automotive shop and then an outbuilding and one was damaged, which was the commercial outbuilding. I put a lot of pictures in here and what I want you guys to note of this presentation is it was a very rapid expansion of the incident and then suddenly it peters off because of the work that our firefighters did out on that line and the work that the sheriff's office did in evacuating and keeping our community safe. But this is right around 3:45, I believe it was, this picture taken from the airport and that was our initial start was approximately 3:30, so within 45 minutes or so, we had quite a large plume in the air. Within an hour, right at one hour, we activated our Emergency Operations Center at the sheriff's office and we had recalled all ESF leads into, so we didn't kind of phase up, we went full These are from R214, so if the times are off, please don't hold it, but CAL FIRE requested an incident management team at Route 510. That was a pretty big mark for us and immediately we went into establishing our shelters. This would have been about 5:35 PM. At that point, we had thousands of evacuees and we tried to estimate 5% to 10% would utilize a shelter and so we were looking for two additional at that time, which would have been to Wollomee County and San Joaquin County. 5:23 PM, we did receive that the CAL FIRE IMT team was activated. It says three in here, I believe it ended up as a one, correct? It was Team Three. At 5:40 PM, we officially declared a local state of emergency, one, the resources needed, the need for potential evacuation shelters outside of the county and the amount of people that we knew would be without power. At 5:42 PM, we had an estimated 6,000 residents evacuated from there or within the evacuation zones, I'll say. We don't have a number on who evacuated. If you look at this picture here, this is Copper Elementary and it came right to the back door, which you'll see here soon. And then again, requests for activations from Twomey and San Joaquin Counties came at 6:35 PM. We did end up committing to San Joaquin Fairgrounds opening through San Joaquin OES. We owe them a huge thank you if they're listening. That had capabilities for another 50 residents. We were monitoring at all times our inflow of the evacuation centers at Mark Twain Elementary and the Valley Springs Veterans Hall. I think we had at the high mark about 100 evacuees that had gone to either one of those 6:45 PM, we got a new count, almost 5,000 residents evacuated and almost 3,800 residents or structures were threatened at that time, which is a large number. 8:00 PM, evening operations brief given to the EOC personnel, so we also were able to speak with some of you guys afterwards, one-on-one, but at that time, we had approximately 5,200 evacuees and the fire was already approaching 5,000 acres. The rest of these, like I said, this suddenly stopped at dark for us. You know, we got our last briefing at about 8:00 PM and we, myself and Boljit, were back at the EOC between 4:00 and 5:00 AM waiting. I was able to have a conversation before that day's operational period with Chief Cassi, who reported they had a lot of success overnight. And again, I've only been here 30 days, but I was quite impressed to get that update and could almost not believe it. So if you look at these, one thing that is very evident is this fire came right to people's front doors and we had over 1,000 valiant firefighters out there protecting these structures and again, I commend them. This right here being, I believe, Copper Elementary, is that correct? That picture that we saw just moments ago as that came down, and this only gets a little more crazier, but you see this burns all the way in, quite lucky. And again, this is the backside of that elementary where you would have seen that picture opposite. And this should be the area in which, up in here is where we had the structural losses. Should be pretty accurate. So again, the fire statistics, 5,351 acres, which has not moved since day two, again commending our emergency responders. Three structures were destroyed, one was damaged and 5,115 residents were evacuated. I think the high mark we estimated from PG&E was 11,000 residents without power. At one point, the communication flow from both PG&E and CCWD was outstanding. CCWD had representatives in the EOC for us, which gave us a really good understanding of where we were on the public health side if people were going to go back in. We knew, you know, once power and water were back on that they were going to be safe or as safe as could be expected or as possible, sorry. So I commend Will Harris from PG&E and Damon Wykoff from CCWD for being in that EOC with us and providing us information. I would like to thank so many people and I know I'm going to forget them, but I'll do my best. For HHS A, Cory Allen and Michael McGonaghy were absolutely amazing, as well as Stacy Johnson. They were in the EOC within, I would say, 20 minutes from wherever they were in the county and established a plan almost immediately. The second we asked for an update, they had it and two shelters were opened within an hour with Red Cross support, so thank you Red Cross. Public Health, Chris Edgerly, was astounding and of note, he was evacuated. He was one of the people in the evacuation zone, so not only did he maintain his duties here in the county and responsibilities to the community, he had, you know, his home within danger and had to evacuate as well. All of the sheriff's office, all of the CAL FIRE units, local special districts. Haley Graham for PIO was amazing, coordinating with CAL FIRE Emily Kilgore. Boljit, of course, Boljit Singh, ESC, was absolutely amazing. Teresa Hitchcock was there in the EOC, dedicated, even went out there and got a tour in the ash and the smoke, so very impressed by that. All of you guys for your role in communicating with us and I am very happy with how this went, so thank you so much.
Just a thank you to everyone, the coordination, you know, you've been here a month, but you fell right into place and just, you know, everyone stepping up over the years, coming together with plans, working together in these instances from the top in CAL FIRE with the state to our own OES and everyone else that's involved is phenomenal. Thank you all for doing a good job.
I just want to say thank you, especially to Eric and Michelle and Nick for keeping me updated, whether it be text messages or calls and coordinating that time zone. I really appreciate it and I know hearing from constituents, everyone is very grateful and I'm very happy and thankful to each and every one of you, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all the communication. Thank you for everything that everybody did. I just had a quick question and that is, coming this fall, when we have rains and the topography and just judging how close this fire came to residences, do you think that we'll have an issue with mud or what have you?
Got any comment on that?
Or is it grassland that we don't have to worry about, that sort of thing?
Well, I mean typically, anytime that we have a hot fire that burns vegetation, you know, there is the chance for erosion in the next one to two years. We'll have to see how that goes and we'll monitor, of course.
Yeah, well, thank you for everything.
Eric, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I want to thank everybody for their efforts. It was fantastic. If you look at the overview of everything, you saved almost everything that needed to be saved. It was just an effort, a combined effort from everybody, evacuation, Rochelle and Nick and all the fire departments, thank you very much. It could have been much, 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 much worse. It could have destroyed the town of Copper, but you guys stepped in and did what you needed to do and want to thank everyone involved in it. Thank you.
I did forget one person to call up and that was Lisa Medina from Animal Services. If she could have a moment for some thank you.
Lisa, come on up.
Also, I owe her debt of gratitude, so thank you, Lisa.
Hello, everybody. Good morning. So, again, Eric, thank you. Thank you to the whole team, everybody in here. It was just amazing. We were in the EOC the entire time. I'm still catching up on my sleep, but I also want to send out special thanks to Twomey and Amador Animal Services teams for coming to our assistance. They were able to man some of the shelters in Valley Springs and also our other Mark Twain and they were actually able to spend the night there because I had my animal service staff not only doing standard operations, but also out in the field assisting people, evacuees going in and feeding their animals. So, a huge kudos and thank you to them. We couldn't have done that without them. Our Calaveras staff were amazing. They were assisting with evacuations, animal feedings, while still maintaining our standard operations at our animal shelter. A huge thank you to Lori Chanini with the Fairgrounds crew. They took in horses, donkeys, goats, guardian dogs, there were four guardian dogs for 80 goats, tortoises, rabbits, and a box of peacock chicks. Mark Twain of Valley Springs had several dogs and cats and even a few rabbits. Our Calaveras animal shelter took in seven dogs, six cats, and two rabbits. I would also like to thank our Sheriff's Department and CAL FIRE and their dispatch crew for assisting us with our officers getting behind the lines of fire and help feed our community animals. As always, good communication and collaboration were the key in this success in our response and I can't thank the team for being just remarkable and Eric and Boljit for doing an outstanding job and being part of the leadership team really much. Very much appreciated.
And if I could close with the most important statistic of all, when we visited our shelters, people that were evacuated from the homes spent multiple days there, the lowest rating we got was 10 out of 10 and there was one 13 out of 10, but that was from dozens of people. So, our staff that did set up those evacuations and manned those with the Red Cross got absolutely A-plus rating from everybody that was evacuated to those locations.
Under Sheriff, do you want to add something?
I just have to say it though, the only thing we weren't able to save is our overtime budget. So this is this is the end of June. This fire will impact our very first pay period for July 1st, so I look forward to discussion at final budget for augmenting for that. Thank you, Senator.
Under Sheriff, we'd expect nothing less.
That was a great plug.
I want to I want to add my voice to the to those compliments from this board, supervisor to all of our team. You all did a wonderful job. You know, we dodged a bullet and we're getting better every time. I often think back to 2015 and the progress that we've made as a team putting this together. I know you guys are going to have an after-action review and go through everything and we're just getting better and better. And as I told people when they're calling, don't worry. I'm glad you're calling me. Don't call our responders, they are doing the work and you guys really did the work and it was it was impressive. I'm very, very proud of our of our response on this fire and from everybody. Public Works, Environmental Health, Sheriff, Fire, OES, Health and Human Services, everybody knew their job and stepped up and went right into action. So our citizens should be very pleased with the work that's happening. You cannot always predict what the future is going to hold, but I think we could all say we're doing our best to get ready and I want to just thank you all.
Any other comments from the board? Supervisor Stopper, do you have one other thing?
No. Thank you very much, Eric. I think we're going to ratify your disaster declaration.
I would appreciate it.
I want to let you all get back to get back to work, so. Any public comment on this item? It's not an action item, but it was a public discussion. Anything online?
We have no online public comment.
All right, let's move on to Regal, item number one.
Item one, resolution, OES adopt a resolution ratifying the declaration by the Director of Emergency Services of a local state of emergency beginning on June 17, 2024, due to the Arrow Fire.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Any public comment online?
None online.
Anybody want to say anything in the room? Very well, is there a motion?
Move.
Move by Supervisor Faldorf, sir second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's 5-0. Is there any further business to be conducted today?
No.
Madam CEO?
I did want to thank one more person who was involved in this incident and as Eric said, I'm sure we're forgetting people who actually participated because the entire community rallied around this fire. But we did have some folks who were in the evacuation area who lacked transportation and we did call Melissa Roggio with our local COG and she made specialized transportation available for those folks. So I just, I mean, everybody literally came together on this and I just want to acknowledge our local COG for that effort.
When the bell rings, this community goes to line. So thank you. See, no further business? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.